Good morning, everyone. This is the demolition board of appeals. Today is May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. If we could begin with a roll call, please.
Good morning, everybody. City of Lorraine Building Official Dave Fasiana.
Yeah. There's a presence.
Mayor appointee to the demolition board of appeals Armando Francisco. Absolute. City of Lorraine Director of Public and Safety Service Ray Carrión.
Not here.
House Commissioner Lorraine County Board of Health and Representative Greg Pucha.
Here.
City of Lorraine Fire Chief and Representative Sean Lloyd.
Here.
City of Lorraine Engineer and Representative Dalton Evans. City of Lorraine Electrician and Representative Paul Sampaio.
Here.
Great, thank you. Next matter of business is disposition of minutes. We do have two sets of minutes. The first is from March twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. The second is from April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. So we need a motion to dispose of the meeting minutes.
Make a motion. Um, yeah. There's, I propose a amendment to be made between April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty.
That is.
Um, March twentieth. Um, there is a manifesto paragraph, there is, is removing the top, should be, is removing the water tap. And then on the second page, fourth paragraph, it says, the representative confirmed that they had, and mentioned that engineering staff had already been out looking for the water line of what it was located. It should be utilities.
Great, thank you. Uh, so do you make a second with amended comments? Okay, so we do have a motion to accept them both meeting minutes. And we do have a second with amended comments made by the engineering department. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item is new business.
There is.
We have no new business, so we are going to move on to old business. Uh, and the first will be case number six three dash two thousand and twenty four.
Six three, two zero two four, PPN, zero two, zero one, zero zero three, one seven six, zero one five. Address is five oh four West Twenty Fourth Street. Owner name is Xavier Mendez.
Mr. Mendez is here, okay.
Right hand. You're going to talk to your belters and nothing but the truth. I'm going to mic, say your name. On the gap, right? My name is Xavier Mendez.
Morning, everybody. My name is Juan Ruiz, House Inspector. I'll be serving as a translator for Mr. Mendez. Um, he'll be representing himself for the property located at five oh four West Forty Fourth Street.
Great, thank you. So you provide an update in terms of where, where, where are we since, since the last meeting?
So, Mr. Mendez is telling us that he's been working, you know, just sort of getting our cleanup of the entire property. He hasn't taken all, all the stuff that he's got inside of the property yet. Uh, because he's been suffering for some vandalism. So basically, all the doors and windows, they, they have some damages of today. He'd be willing to pull up our mirrors of today. And that's basically the updated that he's got from the last meeting to today.
Uh, thank you. Before I actually turn this over to the building, nursing and planning department, I have a question. You know, we, we have asked before, all the, all the folks that are coming before this by to provide information ahead of time, seven days before the meeting, pictures, progress reports, something that we can view. Uh, unless I'm missing something here, I do not see anything for this property. Uh, it's just a blank page without any information. Could you ask him why we're not receiving that information as requested?
He said that he basically forgot to send us all the evidence. He said that he's got everything on his cell phone, but, uh, he was busy doing something else.
Okay, all right, thank you. Maybe discuss it through our legal department. Um, in terms of the process here, the, the process clearly states that all the information shall be submitted seven days before the scheduled meeting. And that is, uh, the updated report, updated pictures. Uh, and I know we have been lenient with, with folks here for over the last year. Uh, and, but my question to the law department, if that information is not submitted as required, uh, can the city withhold placing this item on the agenda? Or does the city can take a different action?
Well, it has to be on the agenda, but it's more its prerogative. They could vote to just take it off the list and put it back on the demolition.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, if these people aren't complying with what you're telling them to do, put it back on the demolition list.
Got it. Uh, you know, and, and for those folks that have been here in the past, and our, our goal is to work with people. We want to see this, the homes, uh, renovated, uh, instead of having every property torn down. And if there's a willing owner, willing to invest, we would like to see that. But also, uh, on the other hand, we do not want to have this be a process where folks come in, apply as for a stay, and then it becomes a two-year process or a three-year process where we see no activity. Because that defeats the whole purpose of having the laws, the building standards, and, and the manpower required for the city to follow up. So if we're going to be here, let's do things the right way. If you need help, let us know, we'll help you. Uh, but let's not go ahead and, and take advantage of the system, because we're, we're not going to tolerate that. Uh, we're going to be very strict and, uh, the, the, unfortunately, consequences that will lead to uh, possibly an unfortunate result for you, but we want to make sure that people are complying. We've mentioned this every month, and every month when I go through this list, I see one or two people that comply with information, no one else does. And you know what? I'm not going to waste our time, so I'm, I'm hoping that you can work with us. Andy?
You're going to talk to your belters and nothing but the truth.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I have no updates.
Okay, has the building department been out to the property to see what kind of condition it's in?
Um, as part of routine, um, patrols throughout the city of Lorraine, yes, but not in particular for any scheduled inspections per the permitting process.
Okay, good. Could anybody on the building side explain what are the issues that are, that are, that are listed here? What needs to be done to get this property off the demo list?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, there is extensive work that needs to be completed at the property. Um, starting with the foundation, there are broken, there are massive and large holes in the foundation that we need to be repaired and shored up. Um, damaged windows, damaged doors. Moving on to the interior, electrical plumbing, um, there are, the, the whole back of half of the house is open, so there's no drywall. Um, this house is a full rehabilitation. It's, um, again, not something that's going to be completed in a, in a short timeframe. It is a large project.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Are there additional comments from the board? Please.
Can, can he submit a plan with a plan to repair one of the, you know, can the item be lost, lost, or any of that?
As part of the initial state of demolition application, yes.
We won't follow yet this.
Not as of yet.
And how, if we can just back and forth, when did this process start with this property owner on this property?
There was a first application that was submitted, um, state demolition application submitted November fifteenth of two thousand and twenty four. That stay, um, was removed due to a non-appearance. This would be the second state of demolition application submitted April ninth of two thousand and twenty five. Um, so again, he's been under that stay since the application was submitted.
And since the application was submitted November fifteenth, we do not have any records of any inspections or any site visits by the building department on that property?
That is correct.
Oh, which one is it?
Oh, that one. Which one is it? That he does that on his own.
Took the switch, Dave.
And that one just goes on its own, yeah.
Dave Fasiana, building official. There was a permit issued March seventh of twenty four. Uh, since then, there was no inspections, and that one has expired. Um, there was another permit, uh, May fourth of twenty four, no inspections. Again, that permit has expired. So as of this time, there are no, no active permits on this property. Uh, and no activities, no inspections.
All right. Uh, are there additional comments or questions from the board? You know, I, I see this, obviously, it's a problem. This is a problem. Uh, we, we need to see action. And if gentlemen, you might explain to him, the city wants to help him. The city wants to make sure that this property can get rehabbed, but we're not going to go through this process where we're pulling permits, uh, not completing any work, not having any, any requests of the city to come in and inspect the property. Uh, we're not going to sit here and, and allow this property to remain in this condition year after year without any action. So, uh, I, I would make a recommendation to this group, perhaps, you know, we, we, we still need to hear from the general public, uh, but perhaps there needs to be something, uh, proposed with a brief timeline to see progress. Uh, and if that progress is not made in any shape or form, then, then we can have other considerations. Um, you might want to explain that to him. Okay. All right, seeing no additional, uh, questions or comments from the board. Are there any comments from the general public? Uh, seeing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion on this robbery, please. And I would like to make a motion. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, allow the stay for thirty days, but that within this thirty day period, a month from today, uh, that the city has a full list of the scope of work required, the timeframe. Uh, and also, we want to see progress maybe till now and next month. We just don't want to see a list in thirty days, but we want to see progress. Uh, and I will make that into form of a motion. And we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Case number zero three, twenty twenty five, PPN, zero three, zero zero, zero eight five, one zero four, zero zero two. Address is two one zero four East Twenty Eighth Street. Owner name is Woodridge North LLC.
Yes, sir. I do. Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, how's it going?
Morning.
Good morning.
Just for the record, name and address.
I apologize. Uh, Dan, eight two five North Ridge Road, uh, representing Woodridge North, uh, twenty one oh three East Twenty Eighth Street.
Okay, so could you give us an update?
Absolutely. I just had the final inspection, uh, for the demo work, uh, to get it off the list yesterday. Uh, we do have, uh, some, a little bit more interior work to do, a little more cleanup and painting, a little drywall work here and there, but, um, roof's done, back roof's done, any brickwork, tuck pointing, windows flashing, gutters, down, everything. All good to go.
Okay, thank you. And I'll, I'll share with you the same, the same comment I shared with the other gentleman, because we, we are consistent here, just to make sure that as long as this property is on this program, uh, just to make sure that we have information, an updated list of showing repairs made or the, the progress report, uh, with pictures, uh, one week before, before the scheduled meeting.
Yes, understood, yeah.
Got it. Uh, are there any, any other comments, uh, from the board? So, Rojo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did do a final walk through scheduled yesterday at twenty one oh four East Twenty Eighth Street. Um, this property is at project completion. He's just got a very small punch-out list to complete, um, and that's purely cosmetic.
Great, excellent, thank you. Dave, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just like they had, he did full permits. Um, February of this year, uh, there were three permits that were issued. All three have passed at inspections. Um, I would make a recommendation to the board to remove this off the list after the inspection that Andy went on yesterday.
Great, thank you. Uh, are there, I see no additional comments or questions. Are there any comments from the general public?
Well, I appreciate it so much. I do. Mary Springowski, twenty one twenty two East Skyline Drive, and also Lorraine City Council at Large. I've driven by this property. Um, I like the building. I like architecture. It is really coming along, and I'm fully in support of removing this from this list. It is starting to really look nice, and I, I didn't even know until just now that it was Dan that had this, but well done. So I like it when we can save a building. And we can put it back into use for the, the, you know, the citizens of Lorraine. But I've watched it, the progress on this, and it, I thought that we were going to lose that one. So for it to be saved is really a big thing, so thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Are there additional comments? Uh, seeing none, I would entertain a motion, please. Okay, a motion has been made to remove this property from the demo list, so we have a second. It has been properly supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and, uh, congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for the comment. I mean, that's the goal, is to try to save.
That is the goal.
Buildings, because I mean, they're, you know, you do that for one building, and it really kind of helps that entire area. You know, it's kind of, but even when we go out, sorry, not to take your time, but we try to clean up anything we can in that area, try to lift up that, not the whole neighborhood, obviously, but as much as we can. That's the goal.
No, and, and we agree, and for everyone that's here, that is the goal. The goal is to save buildings, uh, and, and restore them, and, and put them back into productive use. That, that's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, please.
Case number zero four, twenty twenty five, PPN, zero two, zero zero, zero five one, one zero five, zero zero six. Address is thirteen thirty six East Area Ave. Owner name is KS Homes LLC, Corey Herchler.
Please.
Uh, Corey Herchler, property address, obviously, one, three, three, six, East Area. Um, so far, the roof on the house in the garage have been completed. Signing on the rear of the home is completed. The new windows and doors, um, have been installed. Soft, soffit, fascia, diamond spouts, all that has been completed. Um, it's been completely cleaned out inside and out. I have a new backyard, topsoil, grass seed, straw, um, new gravel to that little garage out back. Um, the front porch has been repaired for all the rotting wood, um, trees cut down, everything like that. So everything's been cleaned out. Um, the exterior has been pretty much completed. Um, it's been prepped for paint. Um, whether permitting next week, the exterior painting would be completed and landscaping that essentially would wrap up the exterior and then obviously move on to the inside.
Great, thank you. Uh, Ms. Rojo?
I think, Mr. Chairman, as of yet, um, a lot of the permits have still yet to have the final inspections on those. I'd just recommend as you're closing, going through your list, make sure that you're calling in and getting your inspections completed, and that you can have those closed out. Uh, but we have seen great progress at the property. Property's starting to be cleaned up. Work, uh, repair, work and repair on the porch is going in sound fashion, so excited to see the final outcome.
Good news. And if I could ask a question to you, sir, that the progress report that was included in this document, was this provided by you?
Yes.
With the pictures? Uh, well done.
Thank you.
Well done. Uh, perhaps, uh, as, as a group here, we can use this maybe as a, as a sample that we can show others in terms of what information the city should be receiving. Uh, and that will help, that will help us make the proper decision. Uh, it can help us support you, but I, I just want to commend you for that. I think this is, this is very well done, and it really paints the picture of everything that has been done to date. So thank you, thank you for that.
Sure.
Um, do we have any comments from the board? We do have, no?
Not on the board.
That's okay. Well, we don't have a comment from the board, but we're going to go to the general public. But before we go to the public, I will turn it over to our first ward councilwoman, Beth Natalie.
Thank you. I do. I have been watching this property for a couple of years, and every parishioner, every person that drops their kids off at St. Anthony's has probably called me about this property, in addition to that lady sitting up in the corner. Um, I'm really, I really thought that property was a loss, and I've been watching the last few weeks very closely. You are doing a very nice job, and I'm very pleased, and you need to continue, or else every parishioner will be calling me, at least in the short term. Thank you very much. Job well done. Short people here. I'm still, okay. Mary Springowski, Lorraine City Council at Large. Um, my family attends St. Anthony's, and that is why I have occasion to drive by it when I am going to some, pick up my dad. And it's trying to look better than the other houses that are in the area. And really well done. Um, uh, the priest actually said something to my dad about it, and what calls back isn't getting, I'm getting. So, uh, I think that using his report as a single point lesson is an excellent idea, and showing it, we should showcase what he's doing on the city website as this is part of the rehab project in conjunction with the city, but it is a job that is very well done, and I hope that it continues throughout the city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, good comment. Uh, seeing no additional comments from the public, at this time, I would entertain a motion, please. Uh, motion has been made to continue the safe demo, and it has been properly supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item, please.
Case number six five, twenty twenty four, PPN, zero two, zero one, zero zero six, one one seven, zero one eight. Address is one 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 three, West Tenth Street. Owner name is All American Home Movement LLC, and Overture Multi-Service LLC, Ricky Perkins.
Okay, if, uh, the owner or an owner's rep is here, please come up to the microphone. All right, seeing none, uh, I would entertain a motion from the board, please. We do have a motion to place this property back on the demolition list, so we have a second?
I'll say.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, this property, eleven thirteen West Tenth Street, has been placed back on the demolition list. Uh, next item, please.
Case number fifty four, twenty twenty four, PPN, zero two, zero one, zero zero three, one eight five, zero zero eight. Address is six one seven West Twenty Fifth Street. Owner name is Chad S. Finley.
I do. Uh, named Donald Finley, address ten thirty three West Tenth Street.
Please, can just give us an update?
Um, the hot water tank, uh, he came in for Easter, and, uh, we put the hot water tank in. We forgot a valve on the cold side, so we got a re-inspection for that. He pulled back, let me see, pulled up, they were working, I just presented that this morning.
Excellent. So is that the last of many items?
Yeah, they got to inspect the hot water tank, and then they can schedule the hot water change.
Cool, great, thank you. Um, Mr. Rojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Um, the only final item pending is the, um, hot water permit, hot water tank permit needs to be closed out. Uh, inspection has taken place, but ditch fail, uh, pending the repairs that were recommended by our plumbing inspector. Um, and then from there, we would just be scheduling a final walkthrough. So once that's completed and the hot water tank inspection is passed, call in schedule, and we'll come out and do the final walkthrough with you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to make a comment, uh, Mr. Finley, just seeing the pictures from the beginning to what it looks like now, wow. Congratulations, wow.
And working with my son, it's been, it's been rough.
I'm, I'm sure he has a similar story.
At this point, I, I'd rather him into a real room on a house.
Oh, listen, it looks great.
He thought he would, but.
It looks good, it looks really good, so thank you, thank you for, for saving this property.
He's not done with it. He's wanting to move in, it's on me, put it on my hands, so, but he and his girlfriend's wanting to move from Tennessee here, and keep stick with her mom, I guess. So, uh, they want it done, and, uh, he's wanting to come, but he wants to work on it there with her, you know, some of the, it's like windows, put the windows in, a couple of extra things.
Good.
He'll have it nice.
Good, it looks good. Uh, do we have any comments, uh, from the board before we ask the general public for comments? Uh, seeing none, is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this particular property? All right, seeing none, at this time, I'm making a motion that, uh, if we are okay with the building department subject to this final hot water tank inspection, uh, that this property will be removed from the demolition list. Um, is that something that we can do through our legal counsel, since we're just waiting on a minor valve inspection? So I would make a motion that we remove this property from the list, uh, subject to the final approval on the, on the plumbing inspection. And I would entertain a second. Uh, we have a second. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, good luck.
All right, next one.
Case number seven zero, twenty twenty four, PPN, zero two, zero one, zero zero three, one seven zero, zero zero nine. Address is six oh seven West Twenty Second Street. Owner name is NIO Phoenix LLC.
Okay, do we have anyone, uh, representing six oh seven, uh, West Twenty Second Street? Uh, seeing none, I would entertain a motion from the board, please.
I'll make a motion, uh, when you, uh, put it back on the demo list, before failure.
Uh, we do have a motion to place this item back on the demo, demo list due to failure to appear. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, uh, motion carries. Uh, six oh seven West Twenty Second Street has been placed back, uh, on the demolition list. Next item.
Case number four six, twenty twenty four, PPN, zero two, zero one, zero zero three, one seven five, zero zero seven. Address is six one five West Twenty Third Street. Owner name is Silas Buck.
Silas Buck, ooh. Um, I had high expectations. Uh, unfortunately, somebody needed my, uh, three generators worse than I did. Uh, I rescheduled stuff. Um, we're going to resume work on Monday. Um, I'm finishing up some personal stuff that I had from last month, but, uh, we're starting on Monday. Um, Tommy is going to start, um, either towards the end of this week. Um, my job was to go ahead and have everything sprayed for him, ready to do his electrical. Um, I'm going to go ahead and apply for the drywall, the insulation permits, um, because I'm going to have to do it strategically, maybe even drywall as we cover stuff in. But, uh, anyways, I had high expectations, but, uh, somebody kicked in the door and took care of some business. Unfortunately, all my wire wasn't in there. That's all I have to say.
If I could ask Mr. Buck, could, do you have an idea or a timeframe when you think this project will be completed?
After, uh, talking to my doctors and the stuff that I'm going to have, I, I can definitely, uh, by November, but what I'll do is I'll have a list for Dave and Anthony to, uh, to show my, uh, what I'm going to be doing, and, and I'm, uh, like I said, after, after this situation that just happened, uh, I was hopeful that I was going to show you pictures of electrical and the inside being sprayed, but, uh, this stuff is going to be started on Monday. And, um, I had to, like I said, I had to borrow a generator, but regardless, um, that's where I'm at, and, uh, I'm very hopeful, and I do appreciate the, uh, what you've done so far, all you guys. Um, but it, but it's all good.
Okay, no, thank you, thank you for the effort.
I didn't send pictures, but I, I did, I, I, if you look at my lawn, I mow the lawn, I do the side thing. I've cleaned out some, uh, junkyard back there. Uh, I, I tried to do some stuff, um, physically. Um, I went back to work, um, three to four hours, you know, a day, uh, as many days as I can handle. Um, and so I get back on my feet, but that's where I'm at.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rojo or Mr.? All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rocha or Mr. Fosse, any, any update from, from your end?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had not received any updates, uh, this past month, uh, for Mr. Buck, which is uncharacteristic. I usually hear from him a couple of times a month. He's pretty good at communicating. I do understand he's been dealing with some health issues, so, um, I would say, you know, I would ask the board to take that into consideration. Again, he has been making steady progress. And, um, you know, but again, did not receive any updates from this past month, so hopeful to see that progress continue moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Uh, how about Mr. Fosse? Anything from your end?
Uh, no, no, nothing, uh, in particular any to cover it. The permits were pulled. I have spoke to Tom Patrick from Patrick Electric, um, about another property, but he did mention he was doing his electrical on this property too as well, so.
Okay. All right, good enough. Uh, do we have, uh, additional comments from board? Uh, CNN, do we have any comments from the public?
Yeah, um, I would also ask that you give this gentleman some consideration. He's doing work in a challenging neighborhood and, um, I did happen to drive by it. Um, and saw the grass was cut, which that was a, a plus. Um, but it is a challenging and when someone is vandalizing, just like, you know, the earlier gentleman, it's hard when you're trying to do work in, um, challenging neighborhoods and you keep getting, you know, you take two steps forward, you go one step back. So, and then given his health concerns, I would ask that we give him some consideration on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, CNN, no additional comments from the public. Uh, at this time I would entertain a motion from the board. Uh, we do have a motion to continue with the safe demo and we have, uh, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next item, please.
Case number three nine, twenty twenty four, PPN zero three, zero zero, one zero zero, one zero one, zero one zero. Address is eighteen thirty seven East Thirty Sixth Street. My name is AJS Management LLC.
Okay, do we have anyone representing eighteen thirty seven East Thirty Sixth Street? Uh, CNN, Mr. Rocha, would you like to comment? Cause I do see that there's, uh, the correction made to the taxes owed. I believe during the last meeting, they showed, uh, in excess of eighteen thousand dollars in back taxes. The property owner has stated that he had paid that in full, so it appears that that has been corrected at the county office.
Uh, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. The, the, um, taxes were made current, um, additional that gentleman was in yesterday at the end of the day to schedule his final walkthrough. Unfortunately, he did come in at the end of the day and my schedule would not allow for me to go out and conduct that walkthrough. But I do have that scheduled for eleven o'clock today, so I'm actually a bit surprised he's not here.
Okay. And can you share with us what remains to be done on this property?
Um, it's my understanding that he's at project completion. At least that's what I've been told.
Okay.
But again, we do have that final walkthrough scheduled at eleven o'clock today.
Eleven o'clock today, so he has been in contact with your office?
He was at the building department as of two forty five yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any comments, uh, additional comments from the board? Yes.
Um, to Mr. Rocha, if, uh, if you give them the impression that he was done somehow that he needs to be in the trouble of meeting, doing that for this part of the project, that's wrong to your last.
No, sir, that impression was not given to him. He's been explicitly told that he needs to make appearance at, at all the meetings as per everybody else, right? Because we have to apply those rules fairly and equally. Um, you know, I don't know if he was under that impression, but it was communicated that he still didn't need to be at the meeting.
Okay. Uh, do we have any comments? Thank you. Do we have any comments from the general public?
I, since he just needs to have, Mary Springowski again, since he just needs to have the final walkthrough, I would ask that you hold this, um, that you would continue to stay until the final walkthrough is completed. Cause if it's like, um, the assistant chief said, uh, if he's that far along, I would hate to see all that work lost. So if we, we can give him a little bit of latitude there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have additional comments, uh, from the audience? Uh, CNN, at this time I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we return it back to the demo list. Failure to appear and then, because it's also the same case, outside of West Point. Project with their location also, but you best know that they have to be at every demo meeting.
Okay, we do have a motion to place this unit back on the demo list due to failure to appear. Do we have a second? CNN, um, at this time I would, uh, entertain another motion. I mean, do we wanna allow for the state of demolition subject to this final inspection that is being held today at eleven AM?
Comment, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
If, uh, at the pleasure of the board, I, my recommendation would be to add the clause that, that you stated, uh, subject to the final walkthrough and the closure of outstanding permits and applications that are open as well, because he does have several permits that are open. Um, a door permit, a window permit and a roof permit that still need to be closed out as well. So if the board, at the board's pleasure, the recommendation would be that the closure of all permits and the final walkthrough.
And can you share, Mr. Rocha, when is that expected to be completed?
The, this final walkthrough, the scheduled, the permits are, the permits, uh, for the door, the window and the roof are not scheduled as of yet. So it's kind of jumping the gun, if you would, scheduling a final walkthrough without his permits being closed.
Okay, so there is a final inspection scheduled for eleven AM, but those individual permits have not been closed out due to a lack of inspection for those items. And it's a step, it's a procedural process. You have to close out your individual permits, then you request a final and you add an overall umbrella closeout.
Correct, and that would have been communicated to him today is, yes, we'll go through a final walkthrough, but the trade inspections have yet to be closed.
All right, uh, if we can go back through the law record, I know we did have a, a motion. Uh, maybe I could entertain that motion again, because I will support that motion to place this unit back on the, on the demo list.
You're waiting for a new motion now.
Okay, so I would entertain a new motion if anyone would like to, uh, make that motion. And I, I will make a motion, uh, I will make a motion that, due to the fact stated that there are multiple uh, individual permits that have to be closed out. Uh, there is a final inspection that was, uh, requested for today. Uh, that in light of that and in light of being consistent with the progress, uh, we have been with others that have not appeared, uh, that I would make a motion to place this unit back on the demo list, uh, and, um, for further to appear. So that would be my motion. Do you have a second? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? All right, motion carries. Uh, and I would ask, Mr. Rocha, uh, if this gentleman appears to be closed, let's keep a close contact with him. We wanna make sure that this project is completed. But out of fairness to everyone else that comes to this process, we wanna make sure that we are following consistent practices. And one of the conditions that we have stated clearly and regularly is that if someone fails to appear without notice, without notifying the building house and the planning department, that that automatically places the unit on the back on the demolition list. So this is, uh, it's just part of a process, not just a standalone decision.
Understood, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item, please.
Case number three nine, twenty twenty four, PPN zero three, zero zero, one zero zero, one zero one. I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong one. Case number four zero, twenty twenty four, zero two, zero one, zero zero three, one three eight, zero one two. Address is fifteen oh four Lexington Ave. My name is fifteen oh four Lexington Ave LLC.
Can you just say your name and address for the record, please?
There is regards to fifteen oh four Lexington. So we're in our final phase right now. Hope, I was planning to have been done by now. We've been dealing with some elements outside of the weather. So we're just doing a little bit of punch out inside and outside. And, uh, hope to be done here in the next seven to ten business days.
Great, thank you. Mr. Rocha?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was out at the property yesterday at request of the contractor here, Mr. Harvey. Um, they are extremely close to being at project completion. Uh, as you stated, they're working on final punch out list. Purely cosmetic. Um, I would dare to say it would be, it would actually be at the pleasure of the board, uh, for removal of the, of the list due to project completion at this point. They have very, very, very minimal things to complete. Uh, little touch-ups of paint here, there. Um, little, um, above board and, and, um, above code things that they are completing to make sure that, that the property is, um, you know, aesthetic to the eye.
Thank you. So based in your, uh, statement, uh, are we confident that all code related issues have been avoided? Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any comments from the board?
I just have one. Um, it appears that you still have outstanding permits that haven't been finally approved.
Yes, sir.
So I would recommend that we continue to stay until those inspections were completed and approved by the, uh, building inspectors.
Sure. Great, thank you. Uh, do we have, uh, CNN, additional comments? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this matter?
Yes, um, I am by that house every Sunday at approximately, uh, ten thirty. And we were rather surprised because it has been the bane of the existence of the neighborhood. We were surprised by the work that has been done. It has been well done. We've all noticed the new windows, the clearing out of the junk. The only thing that we would ask is that some attention be paid to the sidewalks because we have had some elderly parishioners fall in that area when they're, they're walking on Sunday. Um, there's a lot of sidewalks that need attention over there. But those in particular, but we were, we thought it was coming down, like the other houses on that street. So that is, that was formerly the priest's house when the city was first built. So there's a lot of history with that house. So we are enthused about seeing what happens with this.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, CNN, no additional comments from the general public. I'm gonna go back to our board here, uh.
I'm unaware if.
Have you been trying already?
Trying to get it just right, so. No, I was just going to say about sidewalks. Yeah, I don't know if we can apply it here.
No, he doesn't have to be trying, correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, with sidewalks, um, if there is continues to be issues with it, um, residents can, uh, call, come into our engineering office on the fourth floor here and they can, uh, request that we inspect the sidewalks and assess them. Which we will replace them and, um, charge you home or normally over a ten year period on their taxes.
Yes, I, I am aware of the, the process on this and I didn't want to add insult to injury by turning it in. I turned it in previous years in the past due to, I'm one of the people that fell one time. Um, that was a couple of years ago, but in seeing the progress, I just wanted to bring it up to their attention. It has been turned in in the past. But like I said, we, we wanted to see what this property owner was doing with this property and we didn't want to add an undue burden, but we did want to bring it to their attention.
Great, no question. Appreciate the comments. And maybe a comment from the, from the engineering department. If you guys perhaps to just look at the entire block, just to make sure how the whole block pans out. Uh, but in terms of the, the renovations, seems like you're making, uh, great progress. Uh, CNN, no additional comments, uh, from the general public. I would entertain a motion at this time, please. CNN, I would actually then make the motion to, uh, continue the stay, uh, until the next meeting. And hopefully by then, uh, this project can be closed out and we can remove it permanently at, at that time. Uh, and we do have a second. So the motion has been made to continue with the stay and it has been properly supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Uh, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Case number six eight, twenty eighteen, PPN zero two, zero two, zero two six, one one two, zero three zero. Address is seven sixty over the ad. My name is Rory Chavis.
Okay, uh, I know Mr. Chavis is a regular attendee to our meetings, but we don't see him here today. Uh, Mr. Rocha, have you had any contact with him?
Uh, no, not, not recently, Mr. Chairman. I know he did submit updates. Um, as you can see, it's part of your packet. He did submit updates. I'm not sure. Uh, I don't believe he communicated with our staff if he wasn't gonna be able to make it today, but uh, as you did say, he is, you know, a regular attendee, so I'm not sure, maybe he's something.
Okay. All right, well, based on his failure to appear, I would, I would entertain a motion from the board. Okay, we do have a motion to return this property back to the demo list. Do we have a second?
No, second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Uh, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Rocha, let, let's see if we can make contact with this gentleman. Uh, just to see what things to add. I know he has been working on this for, for months, has made improvements. Uh, certainly has made a lot of investment in the property. We just wanna make sure that we guide him in the, in the proper way. We will do that. Okay, thank you. Uh, next item, please.
Case number one eight, twenty twenty, PPN zero three, zero zero, zero ninety five, one zero nine, zero zero eight. Address is nineteen twenty eight, East Twenty Ninth Street. My name is Jennifer Sanchez.
My name is Susanto Coso, representing Jennifer Sanchez, uh, nineteen twenty eight, East Twenty Nine. Uh, we just submitted the application for the water tap. We have pretty much done with this house. Uh, very soon we're gonna give you pictures of everything from the beginning to the end. And I know you all know how this house used to look. So we transformed this house. It's, I think it's amazing the way it looks right now. And, uh, I know she was trying to get in contact with you about the, the water line. Did you ask for a drawl in? She, she submitted it, but she said something about you won't get into pictures or something, so I got the paper right here.
Um, I'm the one that deals directly with the water line stuff. I can hand them off to, um, do all, um, technical.
Okay, so, so essentially the work, the home is completed, it's just the water tap is the last item.
We, we, we waiting for the final. I'm, I'm just finishing some of this stuff inside, like the minor stuff, trim, baseboard and a little bit of floor. So it's pretty much done. I think, uh, this morning is gonna be done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rocha, is there any updates to, uh, the building house and the planning department?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, no, there's no updates. Um, he is, again, very near to project completion, just waiting on the water tap.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, do we have additional comments from, uh, the board? Dave?
I, um, I've, I've been here for three years and seen this progress. I think at this point, if it's just the water tap, I, I feel we can remove him from the list. Um, if you guys are, if you guys are familiar with this property from what it was before he took it over to what it is now, is, is a gem, um, compared to what it used to be, so I, I would recommend the board to remove it, um, based on, on the water tap issue.
Great, thank you, Mr. Fosse. Just a question for the board and maybe for Dave and, and Andy. Uh, do we have all the information in our uh, inspection divisions to, to sustain removing it from the board? Have there been, uh, final inspections requested approved, passed? Uh, are there any open PO, any open, uh, permits that needed to be closed? Um, no.
So, so to answer your question, um, there were six permits issued. All six issued permits have been passed. Uh, I believe now he's waiting on the water tap and just a final inspection from, uh, Mr. Rocha to do to close out the demo, the state of demo.
Great, excellent. Thank you. Thank you for that, that information. Uh, are there any comments from the public? Uh, CNN, at this time I would entertain a motion, uh, please. Uh, we have a motion to remove this property from the demo list and it has been properly supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Finally, you got it. Thank you. Good luck. It's been a long journey for you guys and, uh, thank you, thank you.
We're gonna ask you to come at least, uh, once a quarter to visit us, all right?
All right. Well, listen, thank you. Congratulations. We're happy. That's, that's the whole goal. That's the whole goal of what we're doing here. Nice job. All right, we have one last item and I believe this was a, an added item. Okay, in addition.
Case number one nine, twenty twenty one, PPN zero two, zero one, zero zero four, one zero one, zero three three. Address is five seven three, five seven seven Broadway. Address is five seven three, five seven seven Broadway. My name is Eagles Revitalization LLC.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there anyone here, uh, representing the Eagles? I, I see, do not see anyone. Mr. Fosse?
Yeah, just like that. I did speak to Mr. Gary Davis this week about this property. He was informed to come to the meeting. Um, last conversation I had with him, I was requesting for an engineer's report. I still have not received it. Uh, I keep getting the runaround in regards to that. Um, I know we did ask to do a walkthrough with, with fire and building. We still haven't had access to the, to the property. I believe this has been on the agenda for the last couple of meetings. Um, at this point, I think the board needs to make a decision on what, what, uh, direction to go with this property.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for the update. Uh, do we have additional comments, uh, from the board? Seeing none at this time, I would ask if there's any comments from, yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, uh, he's.
Still on the demo.
It's still on the demolition list. There was actually.
What decision do we have to make?
So this was added as part of the agenda, um, because the board had requested and the chief building official had requested an structural engineer's report regarding the lightning strike that happened in summer of twenty twenty-four, which is never supplied. Um, so it'd be at the pleasure of the board on how they would decide to move forward. Uh, but no, no, no stay has been applied for.
Yes, this matter is currently under demolition list. Correct. Okay, thank you. Um, seeing no additional comments from, uh, from the board, Mr., I, we do have a gentleman in the audience, Mr. Flores. All right, that will be five hundred dollars, sir. Dennis Flores, two and two, West Eighteenth Street. I started the Eagles project in twenty nineteen and I had the, uh, historic tax credit on the roof of that building along with Mr. Davis. For the last five years, we've been trying to save this building. I left city council. We had funding. We had historic tax credits for this building. Mr. Davis remains to be defiant and uncooperative. I even organized a fraternal order of Eagles. I'm a former worthy president. Former junior past worthy president of the Florane Fraternal Order of Eagles. I worked five years to get the Eagles here. We got the charter. They still don't have a building. Our buildings sit down there, our iconic historic building on the National Historic buildings is empty. I wanna save it. I wanna bring it back to life. We got, that's our, that's our iconic building. That is our iconic building in our downtown. We need to save it. I don't know what we're gonna do with Mr. Davis, but you have to take it out of his hands. He's not gonna spend any money to fix that building up. He's looking for a sucker to give him money so he can put him in the building and they, they're the ones that are gonna be responsible for trying to fix it up. I don't know if I can say much more. I'm really depressed that this is happening. I put hard work, all the money, all the time. Something has to be done with Mr. Davis. And the building need to be saved. And I'm, I'm, I'm appealing to you to save the building. Can't say anymore. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flores. Uh, I'm gonna go to, uh, Councilwoman Haley.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have watched Mr. Flores work diligently trying to work with Mr. Davis, trying to work around Mr. Davis. It is a historic building and it would be nice, and I, I don't know the answer to this, but, um, since building and fire have not been able to go in the building to see exactly what it's like inside, um, and I don't know how the law works, but I guess the law would depend on what it's like inside, if it's salvageable even. But it would be nice, I don't know if you need warrants to go in there to, to look and see where it stands, but it would be nice to be able to save that building and, um, as long as Mr. Flores is still cooking, kicking, I should say. I don't know if you cook or not, Dennis, but as long as he's kicking, this would be a project close to his heart and I'm sure that he would continue, um, to try to raise funds and, and make this, make this work. Um, it wouldn't be for lack of trying, so I'm just throwing my opinion out there. Um, we know that, um, well, we know what we know about the current owner, let's put it that way, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mary Spengarski, Council at Large. I'm gonna piggyback off of what Councilwoman Haley and Mr. Flores said. This was a beautiful building and if you have any vision, seeing it, you know, across the alley from, um, the Palace Theater, the things that could be done. Someone who would have a little vision and a whole lot of money. But, you know, we, we get into this situation with an owner who is a bad actor. He has the gardens of Char- the Charleston Gardens or whatever they're called. Um, he's got houses throughout the city and they're all in deplorable condition for the most part from what I've seen. He's been a scourge on our city. He started out with good intentions and it has all fallen apart since then. This is a historic building. I don't know who all have been in it, but the ballroom used to be beautiful. It still had a functioning dumbwaiter. Not that I was willing to get in and test that, but it was still, it was a unique building. You know, they brought somebody in and took out all the transom doors, which are, I mean, the, the hardware and the things alone in there are worth a fortune. And he has allowed this by people indulging him and, you know, him failing to cooperate. He can no longer have something that is on the National Historic Register that is a, a keystone of the downtown, right next to the Palace Theater. He can no longer be able to participate in the revitalization and the resurgence. And for him to use the word Broadway revitalization in his LLC is an insult to the city. Something needs to be done with him because he is what is bringing down our housing and our building stock. And it is people like him that we have to address, but they give landlords a bad name. He's had other houses on the demo list that he's currently got, houses out there that don't have a furnace, don't have running water, don't have electricity. They're basically shacks that people are flopping in and he's taking advantage of vulnerable people that need housing. He has got to be stopped and I know that this is about this specific building, but there is a lot more behind this person. He has got to be addressed, but I agree with Dennis in that. We've got to try to save this building. This is part of our heritage. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Fosse?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, just to add to this building, I agree it is a historical building. It's a nice building. Um, I have been in this building about two years ago. Um, it, it's gonna take at least a million dollars for this building to be renovated, if not more. Um, it is in bad shape. The, 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 the old stage is, is buckled and, and, um, warped and rotted. Uh, the front two buildings or, or the offices closest to Broadway are water damaged. Um, the second, third story buildings or floors are all water damaged. Um, it's in bad shape. The elevator you're, you're speaking of doesn't, I don't believe works. Um, and if it did, it's rusted, um, and out of code. I didn't even go in the basement area. From what I understand, it's, there's water in the basement, so.
Sorry, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Fosse.
Joanne?
Oh, hang on, let me, let me make sure that you goes fine. Oh, she doesn't.
Okay. Joanne Salina?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay. I have been in the city of Lorain nineteen, sixteen steps. I have seen Florane go down the drain. And it is a shame to let these LLC people come in, come out of town, not only knows where they're from, and come in here and try to buy us and then walk away or something else at the administration and before other courts in the city. I'm sorry, I will speak privately. At least here I will have to say this. I committed forever holding and working on this project against the Eagles in the long term. So please consider some hour or other within the administration and the assistant laws, like whatever, to watch the LLC owners come in here out of town and that we cannot get them to cooperate with our laws and regulations.
Thank you.
I've lived this for a long time.
All right, Mr. Flores, we'll let you get one, one more crack at it. I just wanna tell you that we do have the numbers. I, uh, uh, we, we put together a business plan for that building and, uh, we do have the numbers. I got estimates for the roof, electrical. The, uh, the grants came in around under three million. It's gonna take about five to six million to do the whole building. So we had almost three million in grants. We figured we would start a campaign, a finance campaign to raise the other, the rest of the money and then we would work with other entities to try to reduce the cost of the revitalization of that building, so. Um, we do have a business plan and we have financial projections. I did meet with Riddika and I, uh, I've met with several individuals that have helped us put the, uh, finances together and the numbers together, so we do have those numbers, just let you guys know. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Flores. And I'd just like to make a couple of comments, uh, obviously understanding the history of the building. Uh, but I just wanna make sure that as a board, we understand really the duties and, and the role of this board and it seems like there are two different issues that we need to, to deal with here. One would be the issue in terms of the condition of the building to assure that or confirm that it meets, uh, the definition of a lightest structure for demolition. I think that's the one area that we consider. The other area, as the other members of council and our former councilman has talked about, would be is there any, uh, viability? Uh, is available for this property to be saved? Is there something that could be done perhaps, uh, between the administration, perhaps council and others that, that could allow for a redevelopment plan of this property? So I think we have two different issues. My, my question that I have then is for the building department. Uh, just confirmation, when was the last time that we completed an inspection of this property? And what was the basis for determining, uh, that this property met the criteria for demolition, uh, and that, that was brought to this board?
Uh, again, last time I was in the building was a couple of years ago. Um, it was on the, when I started with the city of Lorain, it was already on the demo board for the structural issues where they had an engineer come out, um, and, and, um, assess the brickwork. Since then, it was, was corrected. An engineer architect signed off on it and it was removed off the list. At that point, it was when we went in the building to look at it. It was myself, uh, Chief Radman, um, and I believe it was Chief Neil as well at the time. During that walkthrough, again, like I stated, it was in very bad shape, um, the inside of the building. Outside structure didn't look too bad in regards to the brickwork that was repaired. Um, then again, last year it was hit by lightning and damaged the upper turret of the building, which again, I've asked for structural reports that there wasn't any damage to the building, um, because it looked like there was some shift, 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 shifting of the brick. Um, again, I don't know it's four stories high, so I can't see it from the ground. We did fly a drone, um, over that property last year when this happened as well. And, um, again, the building needs a lot of TLC, um, to repair the building on the outside as well as the inside.
Okay, thank you. So my, a couple of comments that I would add and, and perhaps our legal counsel can, can guide us in the right direction. Uh, I, I, I would imagine that to place, uh, this property on the demolition list in this year in twenty twenty-five, uh, would require a, a current inspection. And if we're not able to have a current inspection due to failure of the owner, perhaps the city can go through the legal route and, and obtain a search warrant to get in the property and do an in-depth inspection. Uh, because to be able to declare property for demolition has many criteria. One of the criteria is that the repair of the building exceeds fifty percent of the value. Well, what is, what is the value? Is it the current value? Or is it the value of rebuilding that property to today's standards? And I think there needs to be, uh, more information on this to determine what is the state of this building and what are the state of repairs and what is the value of the repairs? I was in this building maybe four weeks ago. Mr. Davis asked me to come in, uh, with a gentleman from, uh, the Cleveland area that was interested in, in investing. Uh, the gentleman had been there years ago when the building was in much better shape, so he was taken aback by the current condition of the building. But there has been a lot of cleanup inside the building, uh, so a lot of the areas perhaps that were visible two years ago, um, might, might not be there now. It seems like most of the floors have been, have been cleaned out, uh, by Mr. Davis or whoever he has employed. But I, but I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to have a current inspection that can assure the city that every condition that warrants a demolition order, uh, has been met. Uh, so I, I'm not sure to our legal counsel if we have, have already declared this property as a, uh, unit that is on the demo board. We don't have a current inspection. It's two years old. Uh, I. Falling down. I agree. I would agree. I would agree. Now, Mr. Fosse?
Yeah, I would like to add, I can reach out to Mr. Davis to see if he'll allow us in the building. Um, and then from there, we'll determine if we're able to get in or, uh, we acquire a search warrant.
Excellent, thank you. No, 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 listen. Let, let this be just fine. This is important. I feel this is important. Another situation that is transpiring are the cameras on that building. I've been contacted by Officer Thompson. They want to, uh, remove, they wanna, well, they wanna know if Mr. Davis wants the cameras on the building or not, because he doesn't want them on the building. So they wanna go into the building to retrieve the cameras, but if he does want the security for our downtown, those cameras can be upgraded. And so, uh, the security company wants to get in there and look at those cameras and Mr. Davis is uncooperative. Those cameras provide security for our downtown, so that's another issue. Okay, next to the building. Thank you, Mr. Flores, and, and we are aware of that issue. We are working on that issue with our police department and Mr. Davis. We can keep, follow up on that. All right, so there's no action to be taken here. Uh, thank you. Thank you for everyone's comments. Uh, Madam Secretary?
This is one that we voted on already?
Uh, it's just, I just wanted to bring two, two items, uh, to, to the board. Uh, case number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four. We actually had, uh, placed that unit back on the demo list, uh, due to failure to appear that, that property owner has arrived. So I would entertain a motion if the board would desire, uh, to, uh, you know, modify the order of business and, and, and allow the property owner to be able to present his case regarding eighteen thirty-seven, East Thirty-Sixth Street.
I'm not gonna make a motion, um, but I am gonna recommend that we don't change the outcome being that because he was late. Um, again, Mr. Seymour has been to the meetings. He knows what times the meetings are. Uh, we have a process and procedure that needs to be followed and be consistent.
Okay, so, uh, do we have a motion to, uh, waive the order of business and allow Mr. Seymour to be able to present, um, the case that was previously voted on, uh, to place a unit back on the demolition list for failures to appear? Seeing that we do not have a motion, that, that, that there is a motion, this, your unit, your property has been placed back on the demo list. I would suggest that you contact the building house and the planning department to reapply for, uh, an application to get back on this board, uh, for consideration.
The, the, the house is finished, complete. I just went to the building department yesterday and I just set my final inspections at eleven o'clock today. The house is done. I just was here, I had an appointment this morning. I got here on, I still wasn't in here in the meeting. I mean, the house is complete. I just literally was in the building department yesterday. It set up, I tried to have him come out yesterday to come and complete the final inspection, but they said they had nobody, had two fires or something like that. But I got it set for eleven o'clock today to, for final inspection. The house completely done. I got everything done on the list that I, that I presented. Everything is done.
Yeah, so at this time, the decision has been made. I would just recommend that you speak with building housing and planning and go through the process. Uh, it's, it's a strict process that we've had here. We're being very consistent. Uh, a vote was already made on your property, uh, at the beginning of this meeting. And, uh, the meetings began at nine AM and we asked folks to arrive here before nine AM so we can discuss your case.
I mean, I'm a, I'm a local resident. I'm born and raised in Lorain, like, I have never had no problems here, like, I don't understand. I finished with the, the whole project. Like, I paid two fifty two times already. Like, I mean, I'm not here, I, my house wasn't even a house that I bought from the auction. I paid how cash for the house. Like, I didn't get the house for two dollars. You know, the house is completed. Like, I don't understand. Why would I have to go through, what, I gotta pay two fifty again just to come here and I'm done with the house? I'm literally done with the house. I don't understand.
This is a first of eleven times. These are all still outstanding permits that are close to that as well. Uh, the door permit is outstanding, here it has been passed, the door permit is outstanding. The final, final inspection, the roof, it needs to be done by the building inspectors, not the housing inspector. How do you expect to go out to a final inspection that's being moved off of it? It's not permanent, right? So, and yesterday, yes, you said your inspection, your eleven o'clock. That doesn't mean that we moved off the list yet because we still had a meeting at nine o'clock to come to to state your case. If you were here, we probably wouldn't have moved off the list. Like, we had two other people who just saw this a minor thing as well. But again, it's a procedure and process that you have to play, that you follow, you process. Otherwise, the building will be filed left out there. Anybody wants what they want. So the process has come to these nine o'clock, state your case, present your information. And then your eleven o'clock meeting, this is for your thing. And that would have been considered, but you weren't here, I should so my, my recommendation would be, they should be able to give hope out. Your inspection at eleven, pass all that, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you there, I can tell you something else. Your inspection at eleven, or?
I'm, if, if you want to stick around after the meeting, we can talk to you after the meeting.
I mean, I just got one more thing to say. I mean, as a resident of Lorain, I just don't, I don't, I don't, I don't understand, like, I literally, my house hasn't been on the, the demo list for two years, three years. I'll be, I come in here, I see properties on here that's been here for two, three years. I've been on here for a couple of months, I feel like, really, because I, when I bought the house, I didn't even know it was on the demo list. I mean, I, I, really, it's like, it don't make sense that I, I'm finished with the project and Dave knows me, like, I don't understand. The house been done, I've been completing work every, every month.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Four forty-six? Okay. All right, uh, thank you. That was the last item of the process. Uh, do we have any, um, miscellaneous concerns from, uh, from the body?
I just have one. Uh, there was an application that was dropped off yesterday. Again, it was past the due dates to be on the agenda for May. Um, if, if, I, I have to get it up, it's past the deadline. Um, this was the property at four four six Delaware. It was already on the board for demolition. It was approved by the demo board for demolition. Um, we already have awarded contracts. At this point in time, um, our contractor is ready to demolish the property, but there's obstruction right now, uh, with vehicles blocking the demo.
No, 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 yeah. Uh, I, at this time, I, I would like to entertain a motion to allow this gentleman to be able to address his body. You know, this is a public forum. Uh, I want to make sure that we're hearing from people and then we're not, we're not, you know, sending people out. Uh, this, this particular property, just, just to give you a little brief, the, the brief recap from what I know and from what I've heard. Okay, this has been on the demo list. Uh, an order has been, uh, made. The demolition, uh, order has been awarded. Uh, a contract has been awarded for the demolition of the property. A special subatement has already been performed. The city has spent dollars already to do that work. And right now, the last item is the actual demolition. Where, what I understood yesterday is that recently, uh, perhaps vehicles owned by, by the, by the gentleman, property owner were placed in front and the back of the house. I'm not sure if that was just placed intentionally to prevent the demo, but that's what we see that as possibly. And, uh, and then there was a request made through, um, our legal counsel that the property owner had requested to reimburse or pay back the city the dollars spent on the abatement work. Uh, and that the gentleman would like to, uh, renovate the property and bring it back to its original glory, uh, to some degree or some timeframe, which I'm not sure. So that is the information that I was pretty to yesterday. Uh, but if the board, at your discretion, if you would like to, uh, allow this conversation to take place, uh, I would entertain a motion to do so. If you decide not to, then that's your, your choice. But I would need a motion either way.
So is, it's on the, vehicles blocking the demo now. Vehicles weren't there, the house would already be down. Is that correct?
Well, I'm not sure. What was the demolition schedule for?
Uh, it was scheduled for last week, but we've been working on this, this property and getting it demolished. Then there was a, uh, I believe court information or court paperwork that was sent to, uh, the building department in regards to try and stop it, which from what I understand was the wrong uh, paperwork that was submitted to the courts, therefore it was continuing the demo. So this property would already, would already been down.
Okay, and if I could just make a statement for our legal counsel. We did meet with, uh, attorney Bresart with, with Ken on this, and I know Ken had been communicating with the gentleman's legal counsel, which I'm, I'm sure he's here. Uh, requesting, uh, a potential appeal on the property. So I just want to make sure that you are aware of that, that that information has been, uh, gone in the last day or so. Okay, so at this time, I would, as, as the board, as a pleasure, we'd like to hear from the gentleman. Uh, we'd entertain a motion. If the motion, uh, are the pleasures to not, uh, bring this matter up, then, then I will leave that up to you.
Oh, I'll make the motion that we hear from Mr. Kidd.
Okay, we do have a motion. Uh, do we have, do we have a second? All right, we do have a second. All those in favor, say that's not my saying, aye? Aye, oppose? All right, Mr. Kidd, does it need to be sworn in? Please, please, uh, tell us what's going on.
My name is Tristan Kidd, uh, from four four six Delaware Avenue. Um, I did, uh, file the wrong information. That was a complaint, but it wasn't a TRO. I tried to place a TRO, which is emergency, uh, temporary restraining order to stop this because of the due process. I haven't received a lot of these information, these letters. I wasn't even informed that this property was on the demo list. I have received a, a docket that I have received from the office upstairs. And I have a list of, uh, uh, turn, turn mail that was sent to me. I don't have, uh, don't have any emails. I don't have any phone calls or anything, and I was notified.
Okay.
Tristan Kidd, four four six Delaware Avenue, Lorain, Ohio. Um, I have, uh, letters that was returned to sender. I didn't receive, uh, information that this was taking place, because, I mean, I, I was on the demo list for a previous property. And I've been to meetings, I've been through this whole strenuous process to get that property off the demo list. So there's no way I would have been notified about this property and not had any type of communication to try to stop this. When I got notice of this situation, it was already to the point where the demo was ordered, the contract was already ordered. I would have never let this happen, take place. It's not like my first time at this demo meeting. So I've been through this process. So I, my last property that I went through, that was over a year, maybe even longer than that, I went through that process. So it's like, I would have never just not, no communication or nothing to get my property knocked down. It's my last property that I own. I plan on doing a sober living at this facility. So I went through every process, everything I could do to try to stop this process. I was in California. I don't live here, and I explained that to the board before. I was going through personal situations where I wasn't even in Ohio. So the mail that was getting sent that did come, my mother was sending my mail to California and me and my spouse or my fiance at the time was having problems, so I didn't receive that mail. I had no recollection or any type of information that my home was about to be knocked down. This is a seven-unit property that I owned for almost three years. And I just finished the other property to get some money to fit, fix it up. So it's like, this, this, I don't understand how it could get to this point where it's like no communication was like, I have no email, there's no, no calls, it's just only letters that's been sent that I haven't received. So it's like, I'm just trying to figure out if there's some type of process that I can go back through due process to get a chance to get an official inspection. Also, I noticed that in that package, the last inspection that was done at my property was, uh, twenty twenty-three. So this was based upon them coming to my property in twenty twenty-three doing a special inspection that it was uh, deemed unsafe or deemed whatever the problem was that it was on the property list. They haven't been out since then. I don't know if they came when you said they did the warrant, but I had made major upgrades. I put new doors all on, all this property. I had thousands of dollars worth of material inside this property. So it's not like I wasn't doing any work. I've been actively doing work. I just had a dumpster over there less than two months ago. So I've been doing work, doing cleanouts and getting to it, but I, I just haven't received none of these proper letters to know that my property was being demoed. So, I'm, I mean, I'm here today because, uh, like, uh, Dave said, we did file, uh, a complaint with the city in a TRO to try to stop this process, but I filed to stay at demo to give my information about my plans for the, uh, property. And just to get a, a, a better chance to have another inspection done to see of the unsafe things or the reason why this property was placed on the demo list in the first place. Because, like I said, from the, the doors and everything that I've done and all the, the work inside with the mold, asbestos, all that stuff, I had did work to take some of that stuff off. And I remember Dave, I spoke to Dave coming into the office and said they would have not have known because I didn't pull any permits. The permits that I, that I didn't pull was just for basic work that I did, like cleanouts and replace the security doors and make sure I didn't have squatters. At one point, I had squatters going in there, staying and living in there. So I just replaced that, started doing initial cleanup, had a dumpster over there. I didn't know I needed a permit for these basic things. So he was saying they didn't know because I didn't pull permits. I didn't get to the actual hard work labor of the building yet. So I'm here at this board trying to figure out if there's any recollection, some type of way to stop this demo. Because like I said, this, this, this building is not a nuisance to the, to the city. It's not falling down, it's not, not like my grass is not cut. I don't have big garbage bags in the back of the yard. It's not a nuisance to the city. I want to have a fair chance to be able to re, rehab this building.
All right, I'm sorry. Give me one, one second.
Yeah, just one second. I'm gonna have Mr. Rocha, maybe Mr. Cruz, if he can then clarify some information concerning this, uh, certified mail, uh, information that we have.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Um, additional notification had been sent out in the form of, um, the demolition notices, notifications have been sent out, and that's sent both regular certified mail and regular mail. Um, the inspection was completed, the demolition inspection was completed October second of twenty twenty-four and brought in front of the demolition board of appeals in that October meeting where it was voted upon, um, to meet the criteria for demolition. So that secondary inspection was completed again, October second of twenty twenty-four by members of the building department, fire department, health department.
And, and let me just clarify, so that inspection was done to determine whether the property met the criteria for demolition?
Correct.
Okay, and was the property owner in that meeting, was he eligible for that inspection?
No, sir.
Okay, has he been at any time, uh, in the presence of the building department during any of the inspections?
Um, yes, I don't know a specific date, but we were at the property, uh, that invitation of Mr. Kidd sometime twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three, uh, somewhere twenty twenty-three, I would dare to say. Yes.
Okay, and let me ask the question, at that time during those, those meetings, obviously that property is probably in the same shape that it is now?
Correct. Uh, the addition of the security doors took place after the property was assessed and placed, um, and recommended for demolition via the board.
So when the meeting took place in twenty-three, was that the matter at hand that, that the property was subject to demolition based on this condition?
It was, uh, previously on the demolition list, even prior to that meeting, actually extending back to the twenty eighteen demolition list before the event that happened in twenty twenty-two.
And in your opinion, was Mr. Kidd aware or informed that this property was on the demolition list?
At that time, yes.
Okay. So do you want to clarify that? Because that's not what you're saying.
Well, twenty twenty-three was the last inspection, but I was here for my other property several times. And I remember personally being in here and saying that that property was, would be maybe on the second, uh, second phase. I would, after the first phase of my property, I was never informed that this property has been placed on, you need to do your due diligence to make sure it gets off. From the time of the last time that was off, like, well, October twenty twenty-four is when it was approved to be on the demo. From then all the way to now, I, I wasn't aware of any of this. I would have came and stopped it. I wouldn't have just said, uh, you know, uh, my, my house on the demo list, I'm not gonna come to any meetings. I'm aware of what happens. I came to the meetings every, uh, I didn't come to every meeting, but I came to a lot of the meetings for my last property and completed that demo situation. I repaired that house to my best ability. It was a good, I mean, a good repair, good rehab. So at this one, I would have never just not, uh, attended any meetings or had no communication. I was not aware that my house was about to get knocked down. I would have did everything in my power to stop it.
All right, Mr. Fasana?
I need to be sworn in, done? No. I do. Uh, going back to that twenty twenty-three meeting, at that point, I, I know that my department informed you of within regards to the property or what the potential of that property is gonna be after that inspection. I know during the, during the demo meetings of your Washington property, I, I'm, I'm a hundred percent positive, and we can go back and look at meeting minutes, that your Delaware, Delaware property was brought up during a meeting that, that's a potential demo. And I know Mr. Orocho has talked to you in regards to that property, that you may want to start working on that property. So you consider telling me that you weren't aware, you were, we were plainly aware of what was going on. You've had multiple inspections with, with, at that property. We've had con, twenty twenty-three and the October one.
The recent October one?
Yes, sir. We, we've had conversations with you in regards to that property. They may have been about your Washington property and then led into that property. But I know my inspectors have spoke to you about that property and the potential of where that property is gonna go.
Would have suspected, I don't remember the inspector specifically speaking to me about this property, saying that it was on the demo list and on a, like, every time I came to the meetings, my, that, that was never on the order. Every time I came, nine eighteen and nine twenty was on order, and that's what I dealt with. I never had to come to a, it, it never appeared on a docket that I had come in here and speak about four four six Delaware.
Like I said, the, the conversations led into that one because I, I specifically remember Andy talking to you about that property, that it's gonna be potential on the demo or go in the front of the demo.
Well, if it's potential, I wasn't for sure that it was gonna be on the demo. Honestly, after I put that work into the last property and the board seen that, I didn't think that that, that property would be placed on it because I didn't know the real reason. There was only, only reason I, from my understanding, it was placed on the demo list was because of that back um, deck that was, looked like it was falling. I removed that immediately and kept it cleaned up, kept the yard cleaned up. I had it boarded up, then I put doors on it, so I didn't think, like, I, I, and maybe I'm not clear about why properties are put on this demo list because that property was not a that property was not a nuisance to the to to the uh neighborhood. I was keeping up with the property and everything. So I, like you said, if they had a conversation that said I was potentially going to be on there, I didn't confirm that. I didn't know for sure. I had other things and business going on in another state. So I wasn't fully aware that this house was officially placed on a demo list and about to be knocked down. I would have never let this property be knocked down. This is, I'm thinking this this program is for houses that's not being attended to, that has high grass, that has garbage in the back of their yard. It's not applying anything like this is a a form of miscommunication. Like I didn't receive this information. This is not just me not doing what I want, trying to like, I'm trying to rehab this property. That's been my goal from the beginning, since that was my goal from the last, the last problem.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna have, before I go to Chief Lloyd here, from Mr. Orocho, can you confirm with the board the current condition of this property? Has this property been maintained? Has the grass been cut? Are there other issues besides just a demolition order that presents a a concern uh for the residents in that neighborhood?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um I can confirm that the property is in a state of disrepair. It's part of the reason that we were granted administrative search warrant in order to go in on October second, twenty twenty-four to ascertain the conditions of it. The judge granted that search warrant for based purely on the exterior conditions. Uh so when we presented the evidence for that search warrant, it was based on what the exterior looked like. Broken windows, high grass, multiple nuisance postings throughout the year. Um as Mr. Kidd stated, uh vagrants, vagrancy, right? So these issues were brought forward and then we went inside, aside from the inspection that took place in summer twenty twenty-three to ascertain the conditions at that time prior to bringing it forward to the board of appeals.
Great, thank you. Uh Mr. Lloyd?
Um couple of things, Mr. Chairman. First off, I was on that inspection of property, whether it was repaired, um vagrants, obvious signs of vagrancy. Uh a lot of open windows upstairs, the back corner, I think is wide open, harbored with animals, um birds, things like that, raccoons. Um the other thing is that this board only hears stay of demolition. We don't see the demolition list per se as all the buildings that are on the the demo list. The only reason we would see it is if somebody applied for an application to have that stay. So if Mr. Kidd's implying that, you know, he's not on this list is because, one, he didn't apply for a stay yet, so we would have never seen it. So as of October, when I went through that building, that building was definitely a hazard to the community, to the public with the vagrants in it, knowing that it's a vacant building, you know, it's a hazard to our firefighters, our safety forces. Um police have dealt with that building as far as like drug usage in it, not saying that this is any of Mr. Kidd's fault to the point that it wasn't a secured building up until the point that he found out that it was on the demo list ready to come down. If it wasn't for the two vehicles in which I've been by the property, um because there was another demo that already took place further up the road, close to the east area. There's a Porsche parked in the front of the building and there's a uh limousine bus parked in the back of the building. If not for that fact, that building would already be on the ground, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Lloyd. I'm gonna go to uh Mr. Kusar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um yeah, I I don't think we're going to come to a consensus um as the board and and between the board and Mr. Kidd regarding the service, between regarding the service question. What I can say though is, you know, in in light of Mr. Orocho and Mr. Fasiana and Chief Floyd's testimony, this property has been on the city of Lorain's radar for years, for many years. The the residents who live next door to this property, who live across the street from this property, who live in the neighborhood have had to deal with vagrants, have had to deal with a lot of issues because of this property. Um but beyond all of that, right? Um one thing I'd like to know is when state demolition application was submitted for this property, they have to provide a checklist of things and a timeline of when this property will be rehabbed, financial capacity to do so, and things like that. Um my question would be for for Mr. Fasiana, Chief Floyd and and Mr. Orocho. In that application, in your opinion, does the applicant have the ability to remedy the situation at this property in a timely manner? I think that is the standard we should hold to every applicant because the one thing we can't see is this property remain in the demolition coming back and forth to this board for for months and months or years at a time um while the neighbors and the community has to constantly deal with this. Moreover, one thing that we've that we've discovered during our research is that, and this is public record, so I'm not not saying anything I shouldn't hear, is that there is an existing case, there's another case at the common, the county court um regarding a payment plan and a tax foreclosure on this property to the point where thousands of dollars are owed in back taxes. That is something that speaks negatively to the capacity of the applicant to actually fix the property in a timely manner. So again, I go back to my question to um, you know, to our experts here. Um one, does the applicant have, does he demonstrate in that application the capacity to fix this property in a timely manner?
As far as the application goes, it looks like he has um strategically typed up something that of a of a completion of this project. That being said, the only thing I'm hanging my hat on, I guess, in that question is the history of working with Mr. Kidd and knowing what happens on the other property that trying to get that property completed and the lack of funding for that property to get that one completed, I don't see this happening. I do not see this property happening in five weeks, six weeks, I believe it looks like.
No, I didn't put six weeks.
I'm sorry, there's there's different variations of of timelines here. But it looks like Mar- March fifteenth to twenty-sixth, it looks like he wants to be completed. The other caveat to this, and I, this is more of a zoning, is he talked about a sober living. I don't know if sober living is even a permitted use over in that district.
It is.
It's residential. It is. So that's something that you may want to just double check with Evelyn if you haven't talked to her. Um I don't, I don't see this prop- project being completed in in a timely manner or the way all to do it. Um he's shown here that he has um a typed letter for line of credits. It doesn't show me a bank statement that there's funding. Um so again, I don't, I I don't, I don't see that the applicant would be able to to fulfill the the rehab of this building.
Well, that's actually, you gentlemen, yeah, Mr. Kidd, can you just tell us, what what is your plan?
Yeah, well, I uh submitted that uh stay at demo and I provided, only thing I didn't submit, I submitted in the email today was a letter from Levine that showed that I had approved eighty-five thousand for a loan to rehab the facility. Also, with the the timeline, I put the timeline back to March of twenty twenty-six, not five weeks, but I needed some time to get the property back into order from the best express though. So I gave it a two month um grace period before I would even start work, but from there, it was almost like a six, seven months that I put on there. That's kind of attainable. I mean, you said you got, I said you did uh inspections at the place. I know uh some of the guys here are familiar with like rehab and properties. Um that property is is in bad shape because it haven't, it's been vacant, but it's it's not that bad. Like it's it's not a a big extensive projects to get back into place. So with that funding that I did provide with that, I think I should be able to to get that property done in a stay of time.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. And if I could, if I could, Mr. Lloyd, and through the law department, uh I believe the violation that we received from our law department yesterday was that uh you were willing to pay for the, I don't know, it was in excess of four thousand dollars that the city paid in this mess of abatement uh with the consideration that you would be permitted to come to to rehab this property. Is that your understanding? At least that's what I heard.
Yeah, attorney opened up litigation with the uh legal, illegal representation from the city. And at that point, he did open litigation and ways to resolve it before going through with making a complaint with the city in the T R O. I don't know, uh when he came back to me with the information, he kind of said that the prosecutor was not open to that. That they was kind of trying to move forward with the demo, that they would look into seeing if they can get some of the money back, but it wasn't clear understanding. However, um I was in in a place right now where I I'm trying to do whatever I can to save my property. And this is a uh seven unit property. Um like I said, that's what everybody's saying, it's not in that bad of a place. Um I have re- uh a lot of future plans and um things I want to do with this property, so I'm doing everything in my power to stop this.
Okay, that, I have our director.
I recommend. Here's my recommendation. Let's 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 cut the chase here. He applied for a stay for this Delaware property right in front of you, correct? Correct. Has he ever applied before for this? This is the first time.
First one.
Let's hold this in advance for thirty days, bring it back to the next meeting, give him thirty days to get something going over there. I mean, we're just spinning our wheels here. I mean.
We, so is this the first time that that a stay has been uh applied for for this particular unit?
I'm hearing it correctly and I'm hearing all kinds of issues about service and notice. And and have you, have you, Matt, did he get notice of this demolition?
Yes, that's correct.
How did we serve him?
Um Dave and Andy, can you answer that question?
Cause he was served as like everybody else on the demo list per the ordinance. Well, that doesn't answer soil. Why, what's that?
Love by 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 letter.
By letter?
By mail.
And and there was a posting on the front door like with every condemnation that we do.
Well, what did you post at Delaware Avenue?
On the front door, and that's the address?
That's not where you read, I'll get that.
So that's the address that he's provided on on the court today?
No, but we asked you, where do you live? And you said four, six, six Delaware Avenue. Where do, where do you reside?
Uh when I reside in California, my mailing address is ten twenty-seven West A, Lorain, Ohio.
Yeah, that.
Andy, can you verify that that's from the letters were sent?
And and Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a, just a quick comment. Um I I would disagree with holding this in advance for thirty days because if we would have known that this property was not going to be demolished, we would have submitted another property to be demolished because this is, this is a completely grant funded program. We have stipulations with, and the city of Lorain is actually a subrecipient of grant funds through another county agency, the Erie County Erie County Health Department. If we would have known that this property wasn't going to move forward, we would have demolished another property in the city, thus providing another benefit to to another neighborhood in the city of Lorain. So it's not that the city will be out the four thousand plus dollars for asbestos abatement. The city of Lorain is going to be out the total cost of demolition because that's not money being spent in the city of Lorain to demolish nuisance properties.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Kusar. I I would have to respectfully disagree. Um whether the city has an agreement with a funding source, that that should not be the driving factor, whether we take a property, I don't know, or remove somebody's property uh from their possession. Uh that's something else that the city has to deal with. Uh my 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 position on this and hopefully there was uh support across the board. I do agree with our law director's recommendation to hold this in advance for thirty days. Allow this gentleman to apply for the stay, allow him to provide his plan, allow for this group to impose a schedule that allows us to see that progress is being made uh and that this robbery is being restored. Uh the other issues that have been addressed in terms of the zoning, those are other issues that that have to be dealt with, whether this particular unit meets the zoning criteria for a sober living home, et cetera. Right now, the concern is, can this property be saved? Uh I I think uh what I'll say is based what has been said before, at least in my opinion, I would, uh it's just circling in my own mind, is that the goal of the city is to save the buildings if they can be saved. If you have a property owner that that is willing to do so, that's a different, that that's that's the goal. When we have somebody that's absent, when we have somebody that is neglectful, when somebody doesn't uh is not involved, then that that's a different story. Obviously, there's a issue here between the building, housing and planning and you, sir, uh that raises a lot of flags for the folks here that they don't feel comfortable even engaging uh with you on this matter. Uh and 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 they have every right to feel that way based on their own experiences. I'm looking at this in terms of providing everyone an equal opportunity to be able to do uh what they are able to do within their means to save a property. If you have stated that you have a line of credit of eighty-five thousand dollars, is that line of credit available now? If this was to be granted, uh to be held in advance for thirty days, what progress will we expect to see in thirty days? And what is the progress to assure that this property will be completed by March fifteenth through tw- of twenty twenty-six or sooner? That's the goal here. The goal here is to restore properties if we can. If we're not able to, and we don't have a willing or engaged property owner, then we'll go forward with the demolition order. Uh but I I have a problem with uh taking down a property when you have somebody that is appears to have a plan and appears to have a financial plan, as long as it's legitimate. If that's a bunch of yes, then I'm not interested in that either. If you have a legitimate plan with the resources and the timeframe to do what you say you're gonna do, then I would be more than willing to entertain that option. Mr. Lloyd?
Uh the Porsche is my vehicle. Uh the bus is not my vehicle, but I'm aware of whose vehicle it is. It's in an LLC. So, excuse me? No, it was just placed there because uh I had to move it from another location, so I parked it there. Um the bus, the bus I put in the back, um the there's no driveway, there's no driveway for the front yard, so I just placed the Porsche in front.
Any additional comments?
I just said. I was aware that this property was about to get knocked down about the day that I called Dave, which is about two and a half weeks ago, maybe, two weeks. When I filed my stay, after I came and talked to Dave, he told me that it was already too late that it was about to be knocked down. I came in that day to file my stay, I filled it out, and British told me that there was a new process in place because the last time I was on a demo list, I didn't have to do all that extensive work or extensive uh information. So at that time, he told me to take it back and fill it out. So I had to put together, as as you see, I put together like a twelve, maybe fifteen page extensively showing how much did the progress to complete this project.
So what's your stay after the deadline?
So I'll give you a timeline. About three weeks ago, Mr. Kidd, maybe before Mr. Kidd reached out to me. At that point, I informed Mr. Kidd because I spoke to the law department that morning. I informed Mr. Kidd, you can file your stay at demo. At that point, it probably won't make, it will not make it on the on the list because it's already passed due for the agenda. Um I also told you also to reach out to an attorney. You can file through the court account and please to appeal it. If you wanted to save your property as adamant as you wa- wanted to, that's that stay should have been submitted to us then. And the proper paperwork to the court should have been done, which which clearly you didn't do, neither of them did.
Well, I went to attorney, the attorney went through the process and he filed the complaint without the T R O. So he proper paperwork is filed with the city right now. And as far as that stay at demo, I mean, I was under distress. Once you pop up and tell me that my house is about to be knocked down, it
Where is your day? Lorain County, County Department of Public Security.
No, no, he's not here. Precisely. I have the case number. I have the case number, I have the case number. I provided it to Dave. I sent you the information with the case because you asked me for the case.
You're right, we did, and I because you told me about it, so I wanted the case number to give it to law department.
So I provided you with that, you provided to them?
Uh yeah, that's how we found out about it. That's how he knows about it.
Oh, okay, we, I have a case number, we had the lawyer, uh
But we weren't, we weren't served yet what he's getting at. We weren't served. The city wasn't served. Meaning that the courts did not come to the city and deliver the paperwork to us. So technically, we weren't served. You gave me the information that I could pass to the law department.
Well, for legal, I I I think if information that that we did discuss with your colleague, uh it 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 did have a record from the court uh that he shared with us. So I I think perhaps we need to follow up with Mr. Rezar and he can provide added insight on this matter.
The only issue I have with this is that we're setting a precedent that we can have someone come in and say, we didn't get this, we didn't get that, we're not going to follow the directions. And then we're just going to let them on the board to continue.
Speaking, um that's not a case of it, man. Like I sincerely, like I said, maybe if this was the first demo play that I've been through and then uh you could say that, but I've been through the demo process. I know the seriousness of it, that you guys will knock the property down, so I would never not have communicated for months on out knowing that my property would be knocked down. It's my last property that I have. That's just like out of the question. I would have never not did that.
So thank you, Sheriff. I, you know, we just got this. I I would make a motion that we hold this in advance for thirty days. We can follow up with our legal department. Make sure that any information that needs to be submitted has been. Uh and uh and and if somebody wants to uh second that motion, that that is my motion. Okay, no second, so it fails, uh it fails to move forward. So what is our our decision here?
In the meantime, does he have to move those vehicles? Because technically, there's still the order.
Well, that's the thing. I'm trying to. So in between now to when, the only thing I could do was get a T R O. There's no, there's, that's all. I mean, I don't understand as far as like.
All right. All right. Thank you. I was just saying, yeah, follow the law, law director's advice. Uh, seeing no other comments or miscellaneous items this meeting, etc., John.